You're listening to the anointed sounds of Bobby beautiful music. Release your musical tracks today. You're listening to the anointed sounds of Bobby beautiful music. Release your musical tracks today. You're listening to the anointed sounds of Bobby beautiful music. Release your musical tracks today. You're listening to the anointed sounds of Bobby beautiful music. Release your musical tracks today. You're listening to the anointed sounds of Bobby beautiful music. Release your musical tracks today. Welcome to the journey.
As I explained to some of the brethren before, I actually have a schedule on Saturday that, you know, I try to make it in at seven, but there are times when I run over due to delays or what have you concerning the trains. So we sometimes run just a little late in our, in our starting and I must apologize. I'm looking forward to making my schedule a little better, but I just want to say, please accept my apology, please forgive me. As I told you all a couple of weeks ago, I'm coming straight to study in my work clothes. So if you see any railroad dust on my clothes or on my face, know that I just got off the train. So again, we want to say welcome everybody to tonight's Bible study. We have some new persons, new peoples that are attending with us and we want to say welcome to them. And we're hoping that you'll find a study to be of benefit. And the studies like my baby brother Lyndon always says, not just for head knowledge, it's for heart knowledge. Yes, you are to learn, Scripture says that, "Study to show yourself approved, that you may be able to give every man an answer as to the hope that you have in Christ." So that's what these studies are designed for. These studies are designed to make us better men and women in Christ. So without further further ado, Brother Lyndon, can you please take us to the throne of mercy that we may begin tonight's study?
Okay, everybody, let's bow our heads. Heavenly Father, we want to acknowledge you as our everlasting God. We are so thankful that you put this together so we can commune and have a deeper understanding of your word, who is our Savior, who is our Lord. So bless each and every one here participating. We want to take this journey tonight. We want to again, see more revelation, see more insight of your will, and open our hearts. Without your Spirit, we can't have any understanding. But bless us with your Spirit so we can know you more intimately. And when the time comes, we can have this confidence that you really deeply know us. So again, bless every individual here tonight, open our hearts and may we partake in this journey peacefully. We say this to honor your name always in Christ Jesus our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Amen. Thank you, brother. Okay, beloved brethren, once again, we are in the beautiful book of Numbers. And I must use that terminology that it is a beautiful book because just throughout, throughout my journey, I've stayed in what you would say the safe, the safe books of the Bible. Exodus, Psalms, Psalms is pretty much everyone in the world's book of the Bible. Definitely the New Testament, Matthew through Revelation, Job. But there were books in the Bible that I didn't tread quite as faithfully as I did, like I said, in the book of Psalms, Proverbs, Ecclesiastes. And those books that I didn't tread deeply in are the books of Exodus, Leviticus, and Numbers, just to name a few. And as God blesses us to continue on this journey, we're going to touch, we're touching every book in the Bible. Every book of the Bible will be addressed as the Lord spares Brother Lyndon and I life. We're going to touch every book of the Bible, all sixty-six books of the Bible from Genesis through Revelation. We're going some unknown territories such as Obediah, Haggai, Nehemiah, First and Second Corinthians, First and Second Samuel, First and Second Kings. These are really lightly tread territory. So we are definitely going to expand our hearts and our minds. And as Brother Lyndon and I were discussing, Brother Lyndon famously says, "This is not for head knowledge." Because Satan knows the scriptures better than any human being, you gotta remember. Satan knows the Bible better than any man, with the exception of those who wrote the Bible. Matthew, Mark, Luke, John, Moses, Nehemiah, so on and so forth. Satan doesn't know the scriptures better than them that wrote it, because the ones that wrote it were inspired by the Holy Spirit. But Satan knows the scriptures better than me, better than Brother Lyndon. Because he was present when these scriptures were being written. So he has a head knowledge of what does say of the Lord, but he doesn't have a heart knowledge to be led by the Lord. And that's what these studies are doing for us. These studies are designed to lead you and I. Remember, I'm as much a student as I am a teacher. And like Brother Lyndon and I have equipped with each other, when I'm at the front of the desk, at the blackboard, Brother Lyndon is sitting in the front seat. Sometimes the front seat is taken by such persons as Sister Gail or my daughter. If my daughter's sitting in the front row and Sister Gail comes in, she'll offer it to Sister Gail. In other words, Lyndon gotta be a little fast to get that front seat. But if he's not at the front of the class, he'll be at the back of the class. And then when it's his turn to go to the blackboard as a teacher, then I grab my seat somewhere in the classroom. So Brother Lyndon and I, we're not only teachers, we are students. We are students. So without further ado, beloved brethren, we're going to be covering Numbers, chapters eight, nine, ten, and eleven. And beloved, please open up your Bible and we welcome all Bibles, paper as well as electronic. Please do not feel ashamed if you're using your Bible on your phone. Beloved, having God's word in your hand is as lovely as by way of an electronic means as it is by way of the actual paperback. Beloved brethren, again, without further ado, we're looking at Exodus Numbers. Let's give a look at Numbers, chapter eight, verses one through four. And I entitled this section, "Beaten Gold." And let's take a brief reading. And the Lord spoke unto Moses, saying, "Speak unto Aaron and saying, 'And will you light the lamps? The seven lamps shall give light over against the candlestick.'" And Aaron did so; he lighted the lamps thereover against the candlestick, as the Lord commanded Moses. And this work of the candlestick was a beaten gold unto the shaft thereof, unto the flowers thereof, was beaten work, according unto the pattern which the Lord had showed Moses. So he made the candlestick. Beloved brethren, Exodus, Leviticus, and Numbers. I am favorably coming to dub as some of the strongest books in the Bible. And the reason why I use that terminology is as follows. Verse three of Numbers, chapter eight. "As the Lord commanded Moses, so did Aaron." In other words, Aaron did so. Beloved brethren, the reason why I say these three books are turning out to be some of the strongest to me, books in the Bible, because here we have God telling Moses to do so and so and such and such. If you give an example, here we have God telling Moses to walk three miles and Moses walks three miles. Two and a half yards, Moses walks two and a half yards. God tells Moses to take an inch and no more, Moses takes an inch, no less, no more. I'm saying that to say this, beloved brethren, today's local congregations are not doing this. They're not listening as the Lord speaks unto them. They're not walking like Aaron did so. They're not obeying the command that the Lord is giving to the local congregations. And that's unfortunate. Beloved brethren, the Bible is beautiful in that persons may say, "Well, this might be all a waste, it might be a dream, it might be a fantasy, it might not even be real. We're doing all of this for nothing." Beloved brethren, Moses followed God to the letter. Again, verse three, "As the Lord commanded Moses, Moses did so." Beloved brethren, as we move into the New Testament, we have our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ, thirty-three year tenure on earth. And as he's on the mount of Transfiguration, who appears to them, or who appears to him in their glorified personage as well, Moses. So beloved brethren, as Moses obeyed the commandment of God and he was raised to be on the mount of Transfiguration with our Lord Jesus Christ, and he will be raised yet again, when we go to the book of Revelation, we see that in the future, Moses along with Elijah will come back to the earth. They will have a tenure on earth carrying out a particular work. They will be killed by men. Their body will lay in a public view for three days. And after three days, God will call them to come into heaven. Now I'm saying all of that to say this, Moses obeyed God and Moses's outcome is not going to be favorable. Moses's outcome is already favorable. You see, when you die in God, there's not a "is going to be," it's a "you are already there." Brethren, you and I must obey God. We must not look for church rules and regulations to be our guide. But Brother Scott, don't the church have to have some sort of order? Because there will be chaos. I mean, don't they have to have a schedule that they meet Sunday mornings at eleven? And don't they have to have songs that they sing? And don't they have to have a sermon that the pastor will preach? And that everyone will be in unity with this? The answer to all of that is yes, 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 and yes. Sunday morning, church starts at eleven, not at eight thirty-five, ten, twenty, nine forty. In other words, the scrambled schedule, then you'll have some coming at eight thirty-five, and nine twenty, and ten forty, and then some coming at eleven. And you can't get the church started until everyone arrives at eleven. So...
You're listening to the anointed sounds of Bobby beautiful music. Release your musical tracks today. You're listening to the anointed sounds of Bobby beautiful music. Release your musical tracks today. You're listening to the anointed sounds of Bobby beautiful music. Release your musical tracks today. You're listening to the anointed sounds of Bobby beautiful music. Release your musical tracks today. You're listening to the anointed sounds of Bobby beautiful music. Release your musical tracks today. Welcome to the journey.
As I explained to some of the brethren before, I actually have a schedule on Saturday that, you know, I try to make it in at seven, but there are times when I run over due to delays or what have you concerning the trains. So we sometimes run just a little late in our, in our starting and I must apologize. I'm looking forward to making my schedule a little better, but I just want to say, please accept my apology, please forgive me. As I told you all a couple of weeks ago, I'm coming straight to study in my work clothes. So if you see any railroad dust on my clothes or on my face, know that I just got off the train. So again, we want to say welcome everybody to tonight's Bible study. We have some new persons, new peoples that are attending with us and we want to say welcome to them. And we're hoping that you'll find a study to be of benefit. And the studies like my baby brother Lyndon always says, "Not just for head knowledge, it's for heart knowledge." Yes, you are to learn, Scripture says that, "Study to show yourself approved, that you may be able to give every man an answer as to the hope that you have in Christ." So that's what these studies are designed for. These studies are designed to make us better men and women in Christ. So without further further ado, Brother Lyndon, can you please take us to the throne of mercy that we may begin tonight's study?
Okay, everybody, let's bow our heads. Heavenly Father, we want to acknowledge you as our everlasting God. We are so thankful that you put this together so we can commune and have a deeper understanding of your word, who is our Savior, who is our Lord. So bless each and every one here participating. We want to take this journey tonight. We want to again, see more revelation, see more insight of your will, and open our hearts. Without your Spirit, we can't have any understanding. But bless us with your Spirit so we can know you more intimately. And when the time comes, we can have this confidence that you really deeply know us. So again, bless every individual here tonight, open our hearts and may we partake in this journey peacefully. We say this to honor your name always in Christ Jesus our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Amen. Thank you, brother. Okay, beloved brethren, once again, we are in the beautiful book of Numbers. And I must use that terminology that it is a beautiful book because just throughout, throughout my journey, I've stayed in what you would say the safe, the safe books of the Bible. Exodus, Psalms, Psalms is pretty much everyone in the world's book of the Bible. Definitely the New Testament, Matthew through Revelation, Job. But there were books in the Bible that I didn't tread quite as faithfully as I did, like I said, in the book of Psalms, Proverbs, Ecclesiastes. And those books that I didn't tread deeply in are the books of Exodus, Leviticus, and Numbers, just to name a few. And as God blesses us to continue on this journey, we're going to touch, we're touching every book in the Bible. Every book of the Bible will be addressed as the Lord spares Brother Lyndon and I life. We're going to touch every book of the Bible, all sixty-six books of the Bible from Genesis through Revelation. We're going some unknown territories such as Obediah, Haggai, Nehemiah, First and Second Corinthians, First and Second Samuel, First and Second Kings. These are really lightly tread territory. So we are definitely going to expand our hearts and our minds. And as Brother Lyndon and I were discussing, Brother Lyndon famously says, "This is not for head knowledge." Because Satan knows the scriptures better than any human being, you gotta remember. Satan knows the Bible better than any man, with the exception of those who wrote the Bible. Matthew, Mark, Luke, John, Moses, Nehemiah, so on and so forth. Satan doesn't know the scriptures better than them that wrote it, because the ones that wrote it were inspired by the Holy Spirit. But Satan knows the scriptures better than me, better than Brother Lyndon. Because he was present when these scriptures were being written. So he has a head knowledge of what does say of the Lord, but he doesn't have a heart knowledge to be led by the Lord. And that's what these studies are doing for us. These studies are designed to lead you and I. Remember, I'm as much a student as I am a teacher. And like Brother Lyndon and I have equipped with each other, when I'm at the front of the desk, at the blackboard, Brother Lyndon is sitting in the front seat. Sometimes the front seat is taken by such persons as Sister Gail or my daughter. If my daughter's sitting in the front row and Sister Gail comes in, she'll offer it to Sister Gail. In other words, Lyndon gotta be a little fast to get that front seat. But if he's not at the front of the class, he'll be at the back of the class. And then when it's his turn to go to the blackboard as a teacher, then I grab my seat somewhere in the classroom. So Brother Lyndon and I, we're not only teachers, we are students. We are students. So without further ado, beloved brethren, we're going to be covering Numbers, chapters eight, nine, ten, and eleven. And beloved, please open up your Bible and we welcome all Bibles, paper as well as electronic. Please do not feel ashamed if you're using your Bible on your phone. Beloved, having God's word in your hand is as lovely as by way of an electronic means as it is by way of the actual paperback. Beloved brethren, again, without further ado, we're looking at Exodus Numbers. Let's give a look at Numbers, chapter eight, verses one through four. And I entitled this section, "Beaten Gold." And let's take a brief reading. And the Lord spoke unto Moses, saying, "Speak unto Aaron and saying, 'And will you light the lamps? The seven lamps shall give light over against the candlestick.'" And Aaron did so; he lighted the lamps thereover against the candlestick, as the Lord commanded Moses. And this work of the candlestick was a beaten gold unto the shaft thereof, unto the flowers thereof, was beaten work, according unto the pattern which the Lord had showed Moses. So he made the candlestick. Beloved brethren, Exodus, Leviticus, and Numbers. I am favorably coming to dub as some of the strongest books in the Bible. And the reason why I use that terminology is as follows. Verse three of Numbers, chapter eight. "As the Lord commanded Moses, so did Aaron." In other words, Aaron did so. Beloved brethren, the reason why I say these three books are turning out to be some of the strongest to me, books in the Bible, because here we have God telling Moses to do so and so and such and such. If you give an example, here we have God telling Moses to walk three miles and Moses walks three miles. Two and a half yards, Moses walks two and a half yards. God tells Moses to take an inch and no more, Moses takes an inch, no less, no more. I'm saying that to say this, beloved brethren, today's local congregations are not doing this. They're not listening as the Lord speaks unto them. They're not walking like Aaron did so. They're not obeying the command that the Lord is giving to the local congregations. And that's unfortunate. Beloved brethren, the Bible is beautiful in that persons may say, "Well, this might be all a waste, it might be a dream, it might be a fantasy, it might not even be real. We're doing all of this for nothing." Beloved brethren, Moses followed God to the letter. Again, verse three, "As the Lord commanded Moses, Moses did so." Beloved brethren, as we move into the New Testament, we have our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ, thirty-three year tenure on earth. And as he's on the mount of Transfiguration, who appears to them, or who appears to him in their glorified personage as well, Moses. So beloved brethren, as Moses obeyed the commandment of God and he was raised to be on the mount of Transfiguration with our Lord Jesus Christ, and he will be raised yet again, when we go to the book of Revelation, we see that in the future, Moses along with Elijah will come back to the earth. They will have a tenure on earth carrying out a particular work. They will be killed by men. Their body will lay in a public view for three days. And after three days, God will call them to come into heaven. Now I'm saying all of that to say this, Moses obeyed God and Moses's outcome is not going to be favorable. Moses's outcome is already favorable. You see, when you die in God, there's not a "is going to be," it's a "you are already there." Brethren, you and I must obey God. We must not look for church rules and regulations to be our guide. But Brother Scott, don't the church have to have some sort of order? Because there will be chaos. I mean, don't they have to have a schedule that they meet Sunday mornings at eleven? And don't they have to have songs that they sing? And don't they have to have a sermon that the pastor will preach? And that everyone will be in unity with this? The answer to all of that is yes, 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 and yes. Sunday morning, church starts at eleven, not at eight thirty-five, ten, twenty, nine forty. In other words, the scrambled schedule, then you'll have some coming at eight thirty-five, and nine twenty, and ten forty, and then some coming at eleven. And you can't get the church started until everyone arrives at eleven. So yes, the church must have a schedule to abide by, some rules or some regulations. But what the church must have first, foremost, and final is God giving the authority as to how the church is supposed to be run. Beloved brethren, before Brother Lyndon and I started this Bible study a little over two plus years ago, the very first thing, and he and I sat down, if you want to call it a... the very first thing, and he and I sat down, if you wanna call it a, the, 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 um, the, the, the members of the board. Okay, the first thing that Brother Lyndon and I, as members of the board, said to one another was as follows. Lyndon, is the Bible your first, final and foremost authority? And I mean from Genesis, chapter one, verse one, all the way through Revelation, chapter twenty-two, verse twenty-one. Lyndon in turn said to me, well, Scott, is it yours? And I resounding, I resoundingly told him, yes, as he did to me. So when Brother Lyndon and I bring to you these studies, oh yeah, we may bring our words. We may bring even our um experiences, we may even bring to you our uh walks. But you better believe that Brother Lyndon and I are pattern our lives, our studies after the scriptures. And we're not trying to make the scriptures fit into our local situation. It don't work like that. Brother Lyndon and I is doing this according to what does say of the Lord, as did Moses, Elijah, Aaron, Matthew, Mark, Luke, John, even, even, even as our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ. Really quick, please beloved, open your Bibles to Deuteronomy. And we're gonna look at chapter sixteen. I apologize, chapter eighteen, verse sixteen, starting at verse sixteen. I'm so sorry, Deuteronomy, chapter eighteen, eighteen, please forgive me, beloved. Just really quick, we're gonna look at Deuteronomy, chapter eighteen, verse eighteen. And listen to these beautiful words that God is telling Moses concerning our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ. Deuteronomy, chapter eighteen, verse eighteen, reads as follows, I will raise them up a prophet. Now in my King James Version Bible, the prophet is in a capital P. So that denotes Jesus as separate and above all pastors. I will raise them up a prophet from among their brethren, life unto thee, and will put my words in his mouth. And he shall speak unto them all that I shall command him. Brother, quickly turn back to Numbers, chapter eight, and look at verse three. And what is Numbers, chapter eight, verse three says, and the Lord did so. He lighteth the lamps thereof over against the candlestick as the Lord commanded Moses. Brethren, is God commanding you? He has to be, because if he's not, you're none of his. Beloved brethren, the Spirit had Moses to use excellent choices of words as found in verse four. The candlestick was a beaten gold. Now gold is interpreted as symbolizing kingship. That very much describes our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ. Now, Brother Scott, where do you get that Jesus Christ is king? Or where do you get that he is a king? Look at Psalms, chapter two, verse six. And beloved brethren, as Lyndon uh reassures y'all, do not worry about any of the scriptures. If you're not able to write them down, um, don't worry about it because Lyndon sends it to me. And in turn, the rec, uh the studies that we're currently doing are being recorded. I send the recording over to Brother Lyndon and Brother Lyndon posts them on YouTube. So again, don't scramble if your pencil point broke or if you ran, ran out of ink. You will have these scriptures at your fingertips. Psalms, chapter two, verse six, these are the words of God concerning our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ. Yet have I set my king upon my holy hill of Zion. So our heavenly Father is letting the world know that the installation of his king, that is the Lord Jesus Christ, is so. So once again, gold is interpreted as symbolizing kingship. That describes our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ. Now the word beaten, because verse four says beaten gold, takes this as its meaning. Hammered into a desired shape, beaten gold, much trodden and worn smooth. Beloved, as that gold was made to conform to the shape of the candlestick, and the candlestick that we're talking about is the menorah. And the menorah we um see as it is a part of Jewish culture, um, just look for it uh during the time of their Hanukkah and you will see that menorah, that, that candlestick of which we are spoken of here in Numbers, chapter eight. As that gold was made to conform to the shape of the candlestick, so was our Lord Jesus Christ, given by God to be conformed as a man. Galatians, chapter four, verse four. But when the fullness of time was come, God sent forth his son, made of a woman, made under the law. Again, beloved brethren, such a vivid and beautiful, forget four K, eight K, twenty K. Such a beautiful vivid picture of these symbols and types, which speaks of our Lord and of our Savior, Jesus Christ. Now, as that candle was for the light for the children of Israel, beloved brethren, so is Jesus the light of the world. John, chapter eight, verse twelve. Then spake Jesus again unto them, saying, I am the light of the world. He that followeth me shall not walk in darkness, but shall have the light of life. The candles that went into the menorah that provided light for the children of Israel speaks of the light that came into the world two thousand years ago. And that light is still shining bright here tonight, Saturday, September fourth, twenty twenty-four. Beloved brethren, another excellent term, and let me read it to you so it just stick into your hearts and into your minds like peanut butter and jelly. Numbers, chapter eight, verse four. And this work of the candlestick was a beaten gold unto the shaft thereof, unto the flowers thereof. Beloved brethren, again, another beautiful and vivid picture of our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ. This term flowers, listen to Song of Solomon, chapter two, verse one. Derek reads, I am the rose of Sharon and the lily of the valleys. Beloved brethren, Jesus our Lord is that rose of Sharon, the fairest of ten thousand. Beloved, my, oh my, what a beautiful Savior we have. Honestly speaking, it just makes me blush thinking about my master, my Savior, my God. And I have to be upright, uh upfront with you, beloved brethren, if I wasn't so dignified, I'd scream hallelujah. Well, well, I guess I'm not so dignified after all. Hallelujah and praise our God, our Father, our King, our Lord, Jesus Christ. Verses five through eight. Now as verse eight, and we'll just take a briefly look at that. As verse eight beautifully tells us that the Levites were taken, and listen to verse eight of Numbers, chapter eight. Let them take a young bullet with its leap off ring, even fine flower manual recorded. And another young bullet shalt thou take for a sin offering. Verse six, I apologize, take the Levites from among the children of Israel and cleanse them. What thou shalt do unto them, to cleanse them, sprinkle water of purifying upon them. And let them shave all their flesh, and let them wash their clothes, and so make themselves clean. Beloved brethren, as the Levites, now the Levites were from the tribe of Levi. And these were the ones who had specific service in the work of God. Now they had to be cleansed, they had to be shaved, they had to be made pure in order to be used in God's service. Beloved brethren, you and I are no different. We have to be cleansed with, now the children of Israel, they were cleansed with literal water, the Levites for God's service. We are washed with spiritual water, that is the water of the word of God. Listen to James, chapter four, verse eight. Draw nigh to God, and he will draw near to you. Cleanse your hands, you sinners, purify your hearts, you double-minded. Ephesians, chapter five, verse twenty-six, that he might sanctify and cleanse it with the washing of water by the word. Psalms one nineteen, verse nine, where shall a young man cleanse his way? By taking heed thereto according to thy word. Beloved, in order for you and I to have fellowship with God, you and I must be cleansed. Please do not get it twisted, please do not think that there's an exception, please do not think that there's a clause. You and I, in order to be used by God, we must be cleaned. We must be made pure, we must be washed in the blood of our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ in order to have service of him. But Brother Scott, I don't go to church, I don't have a home church, so how can I be of service to our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ? How can you be of service to him? I have a famous saying, if you can't preach the gospel with your teeth, preach the gospel with your feet. In other words, you could be of service to God in your home, at work, at rest, at play, at school, by the way you conduct yourself. And that you could be of service to God. Because beloved brethren, and I'm speaking from experience, so don't think that I'm picking on anyone. Many of us who claim to be Christians, we live, okay, we live as if we just got through tiptoeing from Satan's house. Now, do not think that I'm picking on y'all by saying this, because I used to be as much as a hypocrite, if not greater. Cause I used to call myself a Christian, a Christian, hey y'all, I'm a Christian. But I was out there sinning like I belong to Satan, to Satan, the guy, I belong to Satan. So when I say to y'all these days, I'm telling you from personal experience. It was until I came to my senses. Y'all remember our brother in Luke chapter eight, uh in Luke chapter six, our brother in Luke chapter sixteen, our prodigal brother? He came to his senses and he came to God, he, uh he came to his father and he said, father, I have sinned against thee and against heaven, and oh Lord, worthy to be called thy son. But that's the same that happened to me. I came to my senses and I said, father. I'm kinda like um pausing because I'm thinking about the way I used to run. Beloved brethren, my older brother Rick and I were talking and he made a statement that I have to share with y'all. Statement that he made, and this is before he turns sixty, my brother is sixty plus, this is a number of years ago. And he said this, he said, Scott, I'm glad that Jesus did not return, I think at the time he was fifty-eight, fifty-nine. He said, Scott, I'm glad that Jesus didn't return a little as sixty years ago, cause if he would have, I would have been finished. So beloved brethren, if our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ had returned, let's say nineteen, nineteen ninety-nine, I always like saying nineteen ninety-nine. So let's say our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ would have came in nineteen ninety-nine, I would have been done. Cause I was involved in sex, drugs and rock and roll. I would have been done. So I'm glad that by his mercy, he hasn't even come up to this point of eight thirty-six, September fourteenth, twenty twenty-four. Because in that, he's given you, you beloved brothers who are on this phone and scores of people throughout the world at this present time. He's given them the opportunity to have life and to have it more abundantly. And beloved brethren, let me just share this with you quickly. There is somewhere near eight billion people on this earth right now. And I'm just gonna use our timeframe as a period, uh as a, as a, as a, as a period of demarcation or lying in the sand, so to speak. But this is current even all over the world where in other parts of the world, okay, like for example in Oklahoma, it's seven thirty-six, in California, it's five thirty-six. So I'm just saying that this current moment, no matter what time it is, I'm just saying at this present moment, God has not wiped out this world. You know why? Because of this eight billion that's on earth, there are a certain amount of Christians and there are a certain amount of sinners. Listen to me, beloved, I'm about to get narrow-minded, so please listen very carefully. In this world, there are really only two types of pay, uh two types of people. There are sinners and there are saints. I'm not talking about Jews, Muslims, Hindus, Jehovah's Witnesses, Seventh Day Adventists, I'm not talking about that. There's only two types of people in this world, saints and aints. And what I mean by that is this, in this world, there are those who are following the Father, the Son and the Holy Spirit, period. And then there's everybody else. Please don't send me no hate mail, please don't send me no texts, uh Brother Scott, go smoke yourself. Please do not get mad at what I'm telling you. I'm just the messenger. Now, since you heard it from my mouth, let's bring legal uh or illegality to what I'm saying. Once again, in this world, there's only two types of people, the saints and the aints. And we belong to one of two supreme beings or, or, or supernatural beings. We belong either to God or we belong to the devil. Brother Scott, I don't go to church, I don't have Bible study. And I don't belong to, uh, I don't belong to Jesus, but I sure enough don't belong to the devil. First John, chapter three, verse ten. Now I said that slowly because I want y'all to write that down. First John, chapter three, verse ten. Eight billion people in the world belongs in this category. First John, chapter three, verse ten, in this the children of God are manifest and the children of the devil. Period. I'm not gonna argue with you as to whether you go to church, have Bible study, read your Bible, love God, love Jesus, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not. I'm not gonna do it, I'm not, and please don't argue with me because you'll be talking to yourself. If you don't belong to Jesus, first John, chapter three, verse ten says that you are a child of the devil. When I was in high school, I was a child of the devil, that's right, that's right. When I was in high school, the devil was my dad. I cussed, I was into sex, I was off the hook. So my daddy was the devil. Beloved, I ain't talking to none of y'all, I'm talking about me. Nineteen eighty-four, when I was in high school, my daddy was the devil. Forty years later, in twenty twenty-four, my father is the Lord Jesus Christ. So there you have it, in black and white first, in the mama second. Forty years ago, the devil was my dad, forty years later, Jesus is my dad, and I ain't going back to my former dad. So beloved brethren, eight billion people in the world either belong to Jesus or they belong to the devil, period. Beloved brethren, again, we're being purified by the word, Psalm one nineteen nine. Where shall a young man cleanse his way by taking heed thereto according to thy word? Beloved brethren, Isaiah, chapter one, verse sixteen, listen, Isaiah, chapter one, verse sixteen, listen. Wash you, make you clean, put away the evil of your doings from before my eyes, cease to do evil. Beloved brethren, in order to be of service to God, you have to be washed in his word. In addition, note concerning this sprinkling of water. In addition, note concerning this sprinkling of water. Now, remember, the sprinkling of blood, which we touched upon in Leviticus, chapter five, verse nine, was for the forgiveness of sins. Again, the cur, the, 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 the sprinkling of blood was for the forgiveness of sins. The sprinkling of water is the cleansing from sin. Now, both of these were made evident when our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ's side was pierced by the sho, uh, by the soldier. "And out from his side came forth blood and water." Listen to John, chapter nineteen, verse thirty-four. John, chapter nineteen, verse forty, thirty-four reads as follows, "For one of the soldiers with the spear pierced his side, and forthwith there came out blood and water." Blood is for the forgiveness of sins. Water is from, is for the cleansing from sins. As the Levites had to undergo both of these, beloved brethren, so do you and I. Now, you don't have to get cleaned up if you don't want to. If you're a homosexual, if you're a murderer, if you're a liar, if you're a thief, you don't have to get washed. You don't have to get cleaned. No. Nope. 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 No, you don't. Let me illustrate what I'm talking about. When I was a little fella, up there in the mud, me and Ernie, and my mom would say, okay, all right, uh, Scott, it's time for dinner. Surely you know I couldn't come in that house. I mean, I came in the house dirty, but surely, surely you know I couldn't come to dinner, to the dinner table with muddy hands and mud all on my face and feet and fingers and hands and all that stuff. I had to get what? Washed up. If I was too muddy, I had to take a bath before I had to have dinner. So beloved brethren, if we live by the requirements that our parents put on us, you don't wanna live by the requirements that God gives us? Now, if Ernie, yeah, Ernie, come and have dinner with me. Nah, man, I'm just having fun in this mud. You think my mom would be an exception? Say, all right, Scott, you get spick and span and clean, but Ernie can sit down and eat, muddied and dirty? Come on, guys, come on. Had one say to me, um, at the day of judgment, Jesus should give my homosexual family members a break. Really? 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 Then why did he die on Calvary's cross two thousand years ago? Why did he shed his blood and water that we just read in John? Nineteen thirty-four, why did he go through that? So that at the day of judgment, he could turn around and say, hey, Scott, you're a sinner? I say, yes, my Lord. You love sex, drugs, and rock and roll? Yes, my Lord. Oh, okay. Well, come right into my kingdom. Come on. And may my Father forgive me for even saying such stupidity, and may He forgive me for repeating such nonsense. Dude, you don't have to get cleansed. You can stay in the sinful state that you end. You, this is why God gives us free choice. In the book of Deuteronomy, God says, "I hold out before you the blessing and the maladiction. You choose." God isn't gonna force you to get it cleaned up and get it right. No, no. Listen, if you don't take a bath and shower up, you can't eat. And if you don't eat, you're gonna die of starvation. No. You can stay out there in the mud. You can stay out there committing all the sins you want to. Sure you can. But just know you're not gonna get into His kingdom. Please, please don't get it misunderstood or twisted. You can stay as dirty as you want. God will not force you to change, but understand He will not allow you into His kingdom. Please understand that. I work for the NTA. Okay? And they say that you can't do certain things. Now, if I come to work doing those certain things that they said you can't, you think they're gonna allow me to jump on that train with scores of people under my authority? No. All of us here who are employed, our employers have certain rules and regulations that we have to abide by. We have to be to work at nine o'clock and we show up every single day at eleven thirty? You think you're gonna have a job? So please don't start saying, well, look, well, well, God just loves everybody. Sure He does. John, chapter three, verse sixteen, "For God so loved the world." Let's get that into our eyes and get it into our minds, and don't get it twisted. John, chapter three, verse sixteen reads as follows. "For God so loved the world that He gave His only begotten Son, that whosoever believes should not perish." Verse eighteen, "He that believes on Jesus will not be condemned." But if you don't believe on Jesus, you are condemned already. You don't have to believe in Jesus. No, you don't. No. But you won't get into His kingdom. You don't have to show up to work nine o'clock as you're scheduled. No. But you won't have employment. Let's stop, please, with this nonsense. Please. The shaving of their skin that the Levites had to do. Now, again, this shaving is of their flesh. That is to get rid of the old flesh. How do you and I get rid of that old flesh? By once again, turning to God's word, the Bible. Hebrews, chapter four, verse twelve. Now remember, they used a literal physical shave or eraser on the children of the Levites in order, again, to make them fit for God's service. Here, beloved brethren, we're using the shaver, the sword, God's word, the Bible, to cleanse us. Hebrews, chapter four, verse twelve, "For the word of God is quick and powerful and sharper than any too-what sword, piercing evil to the dividing of soul from the spirit, joints from the marrow, and is..." beloved brethren, what is our modern day razor? God's holy word, the Bible. And finally, beloved brethren, the washing of their clothes. Now clothes is favorably compared to our habits. What I mean by that is this, police, they wear a uniform. Here in transit, we wear a uniform. And, um, uh, just to keep it simple, the train operator and the conductor, now though their uniforms are similar up to a point, the train operator, he wears a white shirt with blue stripes. I, as a conductor, I wear a solid, um, what you would say, light blue shirt. Now that distinguishes, um, like say, if management sees us. Management, when he sees a white shirt with blue stripes, he knows that is a train operator, and that's pretty in the front of the train, operating the train. Me wearing a light blue shirt identifies me as a conductor. I be as a conductor in the middle of the train. I cannot with this blue shirt go to the front of the train, and the train operator with his blue and, uh, white shirt with blue stripes can go to the middle of the train. So once again, beloved brethren, habits, um, clothes, um, it defines us as our habits or our, our identity. A doctor, you can tell a doctor by his white coat of scrubs. A fireman, he has his, um, heavy fire suit on. A, a police officer, he has his dark blue uniform on with the gun and so on and so forth. Um, even clothes identify us even in, 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 in the world of, of sin, if I may be allowed. Remember our sister Rahab, who was formerly a harlot? Remember, she had certain attire that identified her with her actions and her behavior. But when she grabbed a hold of that red scarlet thread, and she believed, she became saved. Beloved brethren, the beauty of the Old Testament has displayed in the new. Beloved brethren, as we move along, along in our studies, verses thirteen to fifteen, the Levites are set apart for God, you and I are set apart from Him, excuse me, for Him as well. And we just described on how we can be set apart. And again, beloved brethren, I just want to get this into our thinking. We must be washed. We must be shaved clean. We must be made readily identifiable in the sight of God by turp, taking certain steps and measures. Please do not denote anything as being unfairness. It is all done in truth, and it is all done in fairness. Beloved brethren, just to, um, move down to verse nineteen of Numbers, chapter eight. "And I have given the Levites as a gift to Aaron and to his sons from among the children of Israel, to do the service of the children of Israel in the tabernacle of the congregation, and to make an atonement for the children of Israel, that there be no plague among the children of Israel when the children of Israel come near unto the sanctuary." Old Testament blueprint, New Testament truth. Our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ, we cannot come into the Holy of Holies, which is God's throne, which is God's kingdom, of which London brought all of us to tonight through prayer. But we did not get there of our own volition. We got there through who? Our intercessor. Listen to First Timothy, chapter two, verse five. "For there was one God and one mediator between God and men, the man Christ Jesus." John, chapter fourteen, verse six. "I am the way, the truth, and the life. No man comes unto the Father but by me." So again, beloved brethren, we see in Luke, chapter eight, I'm sorry, Numbers, chapter eight, verse nineteen, that the, 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 the Levites were the quote-unquote intercessors in taking care of the certain functions of the tabernacle in order for the children of Israel can come into the sanctuary. We know that we cannot, no man, beloved brethren, and I'm gonna touch that too, Jews. Personally, say, well, I'm a son of Israel, and I'm a black Israelite, or I'm a this, or I'm a that. Beloved brethren, not even Jews. And I'm talking about today. Not even Jews can come to God, except they come through Jesus. So please, again, let these studies re, uh, uh, um, revamp our thinking. Don't think, well, I gotta be an Israelite, or, 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 or claim the identity of, 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 um, a black Israelite and so on and so, none of that matters. No man, no man, no man. Do y'all hear me? I think everyone on this phone belongs in the category of men and women. So Jesus Christ says in John, chapter fourteen, verse six, "No man comes unto the Father but by me." Please, please, please fit that into your thinking. Moving over to Numbers, chapter nine, as I'm bringing my review to a close, the appointed time. Now, beloved brethren, verses two, actually through fourteen. The appointed time, at the appointed time, the children of Israel were supposed to remember the Sabbath. Now, this was the, uh, fourteenth day of the first month. And that first month in the Jewish calendar, beloved brethren, just bear with me one second. The reason why I'm asking you to bear with me, because I'm gonna read to you what the first Jewish month is. And that first Jewish, the first month in the Jewish calendar is Nisan, N-I-S-S-A-N. That's their first month. Let me just, uh, uh, give this to you really quick. And if anyone wants what I'm reading to you, just let me know and I'll send you a photocopy of it. And this is the Jewish calendar. Nisan is the first month, and it's twelve months. So carefully, Nisan, Bir, I-A-R, Sivan, S-I-G-A-N, Tammuz, T-A-M-U-Z, Av, which is the fifth month, El Yo, which is the sixth month, Tishri, the seventh month, Chesvan, the eighth, Kisla, the ninth, Tivet, the tenth, Shavat, the eleventh, Adar, the twelfth. Now this first month, they were supposed to carry the Passover. And that first month for them is equivalent to our months of March and April. Now, they were, um, able, they were to remember the Passover, this first month and fourteenth day. They were supposed to keep the ceremony of the Passover. As we move down to verse six, listen to verse six of Numbers, chapter nine. "There were certain men who were defiled by the dead body of a man, that they could not keep the Passover in that day. And they came before Moses and before Aaron. And these men, in these verse seven, "And these men said unto Aaron and Moses, We are defiled by the dead body of a man. Therefore we are kept back, that we may not offer, offering unto the Lord, and there's a pointed season among the children of Israel." Verse eight, "Moses said, Stand still, and we will hear what the Lord will command you concerning, what the Lord will command concerning you." Verses nine, um, through eleven. "And the Lord spoke unto Moses, saying, Speak to the children of Israel, saying, If any man of you or of your prosperity shall be unclean by reason of a dead body, or on a journey afar, yet he shall keep the Passover unto the Lord." Only, and I'm just inserting this word, only. Verse eleven, "The fourteenth day of the second month shall he keep it, and eat it with unleavened bread and bitter herbs." Now, the reason why they had to wait thirty days later, because they were defiled. Now this, not, this, this is, um, not necessarily saying a defilement of their own, because as we just saw, that they were defiled by a dead body. But nevertheless, God in His mercy, and again, beloved brethren, I have to make a correction of this worldly thinking that the church is starting to adopt. And they say that the God of the Old Testament was brutal. Not so. He's showing mercy and patience unto Pharaoh. He's showing mercy unto Adam. He's showing mercy here unto these men that were defiled by a dead body. And the mercy of God is just so extensive in the Old Testament, that it's unbelievable that churches listening to the world making these false claims against our God and our Father, saying He's brutal. Our God and Father was loving then. Our God and Father is loving now. Our God and our Father will be loving until all the determined. So again, though that they were, though they were defiled by a person, God still made concessions for them to partake of the Passover. Now remember, the Passover was when the danger of death passed over the houses that were marked with blood, so that their firstborn would not be destroyed. What does that say for you and I today? You and I may get involved in sin. Remember, these men were thirty days delayed because of being defiled by the sin of a dead body. Again, it may or may not, in this instance, it was not the defilement of their own. But it may or may not be a defilement self-generated. But listen to First John, listen to the love that God showed back then. Listen to the love that God is showing here today as found in First John, chapter two, verse one. First John, chapter two, verse one reads as follows. "My little children, these things I write unto you that you sin not." And I'm gonna personalize this just a little bit. Scott, these things I write unto you that you don't commit a sin. But if you do sin, you have an advocate with the Father, Jesus Christ, the righteous. Beloved brethren, please understand that whether the defilement of my own volition or because I am in the, in the presence of those who are defiling, God will wait for me to become purified or cleansed in order to be able to participate in the activities as it's, uh, that are part of His kingdom. But you must do what these brothers are doing here in Numbers, chapter nine. Listen to them. Verse seven of Numbers, chapter nine. "These men said, We are defiled by the dead body of a man." Beloved brethren, what does Scripture say? Confess your sins, for God is faithful and just to forgive us. Confess your sins, for God is faithful and just to forgive us of all of our sins and to cleanse us from unrighteousness. So beloved brethren, we can have a part in God's kingdom. We can have a part in prayer, in Bible reading, and study, and church attendance. But if we did commit a sin, again, remember First John two, one. We have an advocate with the Father, Jesus Christ the righteous. The remainder of the chapter of nine helps us to again appreciate that we are not to make any moves, any steps, any actions, any directions outside of God. Beloved brethren, listen to Paul, listen to this Old Testament truth being carried on to the New Testament as, uh, written by Luke concerning Paul in Acts, chapter sixteen, verses six and seven. Acts chapter sixteen, verses six and seven reads as follows. Now, when they had gone throughout Fergia in the region of Galatia, and were forbidden of the Holy Ghost to preach the word in Asia. After they would come to Maasiah, they are said to go into Bethaniah, but the Spirit allowed them not. Again, beloved brethren, we have to be led by God's Spirit. We cannot take it of our own to go here, go there, go anywhere, unless we are urged by the Spirit to do so. The cloud, when it rested, the children of Israel, they pitched camp. When the cloud lifted, the children of Israel got up and they journeyed following the cloud. Beloved brethren, you and I the same. And I just want to share with you something. We may complain about the neighborhood we live in, the job we work, the people that we're around. Beloved brethren, I'm not saying that there's no legitimacy to your complaint. Because Scripture does say, laugh with those who laugh, mourn with those who mourn. So please do not think I'm undermining or saying you shouldn't be sad or miserable or unhappy in your state. But what I am saying is, the, 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 the lemon, quote unquote, the life has tossed you. Don't sit there and just soak on it. Turn around and make some lemonade. And what I mean by that is this, at your job, in your neighborhood, at, at Stop and Shop, at Walmart, take advantage of, uh, take advantage of these unpleasant places to preach the gospel unto those whom you encounter. And let me just share with you this in closing. Um, I used to work at, um, Cessarai. And man, oh man, let me tell you, did I hate that job. But I took advantage of being a, um, an Cessarai driver to share the gospel with people. One such incident was when I was coming home on the bus, um, one evening, afternoon, I can't even remember. I fell asleep. So when I woke up, this woman, she looked at me, and she, she smiled. So I took advantage of that. And I said to her, oh, okay, so since you're finished napping, can I share something with you? She laughed, because I was the one that was actually sleeping, uh, sleeping. But I took that opportunity to, to, to take advantage of what was like an unpleasant situation, so to speak, because I was just worn out and aggravated of, 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 of my employee with Cessarai. But I took advantage of that unpleasant situation to share the gospel with this woman. So again, beloved brethren, you and I as Christians, let's take advantage of the opportunities to give out the gospel and get people drawn closer to God, get people drawn closer to our Lord Jesus Christ, brother and brother.
All right, the journey continues. We are going to embark in, uh, many promises. Um, and, uh, we're going to pick up on the lampstands. But from lampstands to trumpets. And, uh, when you, um, get in tune with the Holy Spirit, you're going to realize that every book we encounter are dress rehearsals of what is to come. A beautiful parallel is Exodus and the Gospels, the first four Gospels in the New Testament, where you see that, uh, Pharaoh, king of Egypt, put on edict, a decree to destroy all the boys when, uh, the Israelite woman gave birth. We see that paralleled, um, with Jesus. King Herod was in fear of losing his throne to the Lord Jesus, and he made a decree to kill off all the boys two years and younger. When we, uh, read about these seven trumpets, and I'm going to show you the branches, uh, we're going to take a journey in the book of Joshua, and then we're going to take a, um, journey in the book of Revelation. And we're going to see that, um, God's people will be given the mysteries of the kingdom. Obviously, we will be giving heed to His warnings, and it's by grace. And, uh, we saw exemplified in Passover. The whole world didn't know about the blood of the lamb, but the people of God did. And death struck down the firstborn of men and animals. But of the family who took heed, by grace, they slew the lamb, they pour, um, they, they put the lamb's blood on the doorposts, and, um, they were passed, they were passed over. So, um, always think of it, I, I, I'll dig even deeper. Don't think of it as head nods, as heart nods, but also, when you read the Scriptures, you're going to get a stronger awareness of the Spirit living in you. And think about it. You don't just get water from the surface, you got to dig deep in the ground until you strike water. Well, the same applies to us. The more we fellowship, the more we, uh, do God's will, we start to dig deeper and find out that Yeshua, the living water, is inside of us. We're just gaining a stronger awareness of His presence in our lives. And when we sense His presence, it's going to be peace. Well, as you can see, we live in a restless society, everybody's busy going to and fro, restless. That's not the shalom that God's talking about. The peace of God is this assurance of His presence in our hearts. Okay. So let's go to, uh, Numbers chapter ten. Again, I'm going to emphasize the silver trumpets, or this is a dress rehearsal. As we see in Book of Revelation, there will be angels with seven trumpets. So let me just read the first seven verses of Numbers chapter ten. And then, uh, we'll take a journey in Joshua, chapter six. So just spare me one moment as I get there. Okay. The Lord said to Moses, make two trumpets of hammered silver, and use them for calling the community, community together, and for having the camp set out. When both are sounded, the whole community is to assemble before you at the entrance to the tent of meeting. If only one is sounded, the leaders, the heads of the clans of Israel, are to assemble before you. When a trumpet blast is sounded, the tribes camping on the east are to set out. At the sounding of a second blast, the camps on the south are to set out. The blast will be the signal for setting out. To gather the assembly, blow the trumpets, but not with the signal of, signal for setting out. Okay. We see the Holy Spirit is manifested as a cloud in the day, fire by night. And we see that when it's time to set out, you hear the trumpet blast, when it's time to gather the community, you hear a certain, uh, trumpet sounding. And this is just, you know, um, in this walk, we're going to hear the warnings. You see the prophecies. And we hold on to God's warnings. We don't want to be foolish and think, oh, God is delaying His timing. Everything is the same as it's always been. I'm going to just take things lightly and just, uh, you know, I don't have to, uh, uh, reach out to a brother or fellowship with anybody, or, or, I can just do as I please. No, we, we're going to heed to God's calling, His warnings, and His promises. So let's, um, go over to, um, Joshua, chapter six, verses two through five. This is God speaking to Joshua. See, I have delivered Jericho into your hands, along with its king and its fighting men. March around the city once with all the armed men. Do this for six days. Have seven priests carry trumpets of rams, horns in front of the ark. On the seventh day, march around the city seven times with the priests, blowing the trumpets. When you hear them sound, a long blast on the trumpets, have the whole army give a loud shout. Then the wall of the city will collapse, and the army will go up everyone straight in. Now, let's go to Revelations, chapter eight, verses. Revelation, chapter eight, verse two. And I, I'm, I kid you not. I wasn't going to share, but I shared with somebody at my job, and I just, I, the, the Lord's presence is just amazing. I'm, I'm going over these trumpets. And, you know, I was taking a break at my job. I said, yo, let me just, let me just check out, um, Bob Marley, One Love. And one of the scenes, there's a scene of Bob Marley looking at this same scripture. And I was like, this is, again, I will, I always say, this is crazy, this is nuts. But then that's the way of God manifesting His presence. Every time you see a word repeated, you see something preached, God is getting your attention. He's making His presence aware, um, He's giving you a stronger, um, uh, uh, awareness of His presence. And, you know, the Spirit and the Word walk hand in hand. So if you do see Revelation, this is what we feed off. This is encouraging us. We go to church not to just, again, have an intellectual knowledge, it's giving us a stronger awareness of God's presence in our lives. Where is He guiding us with His counsel? You know, draw near to God, and He'll draw near to you. How do we draw near to God? By digging in His Word. That's how we draw near, we call out, we say, hey, remember your promises, and so forth. So, um, let's go to Revelation, chapter eight, verse two. Yeah, this is, is astounding, so, uh, let's go to Revelation, chapter eight, verse two. And I saw the seven angels. In Joshua, the dress rehearsal, six priests with trumpets, right? But now, in Revelation, chapter eight, verse two, and I saw the seven angels who stand before God, and seven trumpets were given to them. Another angel who had a golden, um, censer came and stood at the altar. He was given much incense, incense to offer with the prayers of all God's people on the golden altar in front of the throne. So now we, as we dig deeper, from verses seven through thirteen, here we read. The first angel sounded his trumpet, and there came hail and fire mixed with blood, and it was hurled down on the earth. A third of the earth was burnt up, a third of the trees were buried, um, burnt up, and all the green grass was burnt up. The second angel sounded his trumpet, and something like a huge mountain, all the blaze was thrown into the sea. A third of the sea turned into blood. A third of the living creatures in the sea died, and a third of the ships were destroyed. The third angel sounded his trumpet, and a great star blazing like a torch fell from the sky on the third of the rivers and on the springs of the waters. The name of the star is Wormwood. A third of the stars turned, a third of the water turned bitter, and many people died from the waters that had become bitter. The fourth angel sounded his trumpet, and a third of the sun was struck, a third of the moon, and a third of the stars, so that a third of them turned dark. A third of the day was without light, and also a third of the night. As I watched, I heard an eagle flying in midair, call out in a loud voice, whoa, 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 to the heavens of the earth, because the trumpet blasts are about to be sounded by the other three angels. So you'll read that i- in, uh, Revelation, chapter nine, verse one through twenty-one, and then Revelation, chapter eleven, verses fifteen through nineteen. So we see that trumpets are announcements of warnings. You know, when you watch the news, Hurricane so-and-so's in Louisiana, that's like a trumpet, uh, blast. These trumpet blasts are giving us an opportunity to repent. God always allows His people to realize that they have, have taken them for granted. Every time there was disobedience, God banished them. He banished them to Babylon. Then they were held in captivity for a certain amount of years. And then they came to the senses, and, and they, they wanted God to, um, come back into their lives after rebellion against Him, worshiping other gods. So these trumpet blasts, I call them trumpet calls. You know, you, you, frustrations in life, God is getting your attention, and He's saying, be earnest and repent, for the Lord disciplines those He loves. So take heed when you see these trumpet blasts occur. So, um, the fifth angel sounded his trumpet, and I saw a star that had fallen from the sky to the earth. The star was given the key to the shafts of the abyss. When he opened the abyss, smoke rose from it, like the smoke from a gigantic furnace. The sun and sky were darkened by the smoke from the abyss. And out of the smoke locusts came out on the earth, and were given power like that of scorpions on the earth. They were told not to harm the grass of the earth or any plant or tree, but only those people who did not have the seal of God on their foreheads. So again, you're going to see a lot of, uh, parallels here. You see that, um, there was darkness in Egypt, but there was light within Israelites' camp. You're going to see the difference between someone who's serving God and someone who's not serving God. They were not allowed to kill them, but only to torch them for five months, and the agony they And the agony they suffered was like that of the sting of scorpions when it strikes. During those days, people will seek death, but will not find it. They will long to die, but death will elude them. So that is the fifth trumpet. The sixth angel sounded his trumpet and I heard a voice coming from the four horns of the golden altar that is before God. It said to the sixth angel who had the trumpet, release the four angels who are found at the great river of Euphrates. And the four angels who had been kept ready for this very hour and day and month and year were released to kill a third of mankind. The number of the mounted troops was twice ten thousand times, ten thousand. I heard their number. The horses and riders I saw in my vision looked like this. Their breastplates were fiery red, dark blue and yellow sulfur. The heads of the horses resembled the heads of lions and out of their mouths came fire and smoke and sulfur. A third of mankind was killed by the three plagues of fire, smoke and sulfur that came out of their mouths. The pile of the horses was in their mouths and in their tails, but their tails were like snakes. Having heads with which they inflict injury. The rest of mankind who were not killed by these plagues still did not repent. Of the work of their hands. They did not stop worshiping demons and idols of gold, silver, bronze, stone and wood, idols that cannot see. Or hear or walk. Now, again. We live in a day and age, no one is typically going to bow down to a sculpture. I mean, some people do to this present day, but now. When God says, seeing they do not see, hearing do not hear. God is talking about. The idols that people worship now are celebrities. They have eyes but cannot see, they have ears but cannot hear. Anytime you have an affectionate love for someone, something or entity or movement more than God. Is considered an idol. The devil loved himself more than God. He became his own idol. Eve's desire for more is her idol. And Adam's idol is Eve. He had more love for his wife more than God. Heed these warnings. Examine yourselves. And, and keep it transparent with God. If you have struggles with sins. Or you sinned, uh. Um, out of compulsion, you, you, you didn't have any intentions, you, you weren't premeditating a scheme or. Or hit a, an evil agenda. Just be transparent with God. Ask him to give you repentance because repentance is a gift. It's not by might nor by desire, but by your spirit. It's not based on our desire or effort, it's based on God's mercy. But then again, I will say to you, of course, if you're looking for work. And you're praying to God to help you find work, you're going to move your feet. And you're gonna do, you're gonna take the necessary measures, hand out resumes, submit this, set up interviews. You're not just gonna sit stagnant, you're going to actually physically go out there. So God will, will fight your battles, but he'll fight your battles through you. Bearing fruit, you. Because again. Faith with our works is dead. No one's gonna eat mangoes from a, a tree that's not producing mangoes. So the same applies. How could you benefit people here if you're not bearing fruit? You need to be. You need to, as Brother Scott was saying. Not with your teeth, but with your feet. And people will see your actions. And they will be attracted to this light that's in you through your actions. Now we're gonna go jump over to, uh, Revelation, chapter eleven, verse fifteen through nineteen. And this is the, uh, seventh trumpet. The seventh angel sounded his trumpet and there were loud voices in heaven which said. The kingdom of the world has become the kingdom of our Lord and of his Messiah. And he will reign forever and ever. And the twenty-four elders who were seated on their thrones before God fell on their faces and worshiped God saying. We give thanks to you, Lord God Almighty, the one who is and who was. Because you have taken your great power and have begun to reign. The nations were angry and your wrath was, has come. The time has come for judging the dead. And for rewarding your servants to prophets and your people who will bear your name, both great and small. And for destroying those who destroy the earth. Temple in heaven was opened and within his temple was seen the ark of his covenant. And there came flashes of lightning, rumblings, peals of thunder, an earthquake and a severe hailstorm. So there we have it, the trumpets, the significance of the trumpets. We also see in, uh, just came to mind, First Thessalonians, um. When Jesus is gathering those who are asleep. To be resurrected, the first fruits that are resting in Christ will be raised. And, uh, it's written in, uh, First Thessalonians, chapter. Four, just bear with me as I get there. Okay, and here we read. This is first, First Thessalonians, chapter four, verse thirteen, going down. Brothers and sisters, we do not want you to be uninformed about those who sleep in death. So that you do not grieve like the rest of mankind who have no hope. For we believe that Jesus died and rose again, and so we believe that God will bring with, with Jesus those who have fallen asleep in him. According to the Lord's word, we tell you that we who are still alive. Who are left until the coming of the Lord will certainly not precede those who have fallen asleep. For the Lord himself will come down from heaven with a loud command with the voice of the archangel and with the trumpet call. Of God and the dead in Christ will, will rise first. So we see that trumpets. Warnings or callings. So pay attention. To the trumpet blasts. All right, now we're going back to, uh, Numbers, chapter ten. And, uh. We're going to, uh. Read about God's promise. Of scattering his enemies. We want God to be our God and he will be an enemy to our enemies. So let's, uh, read further down. The sons of Aaron, the priests are to blow the trumpets. This is to be a lasting ordinance for you and to the generations to come. When you go into battle in your own land against an enemy who's oppressing you, sound a blast on the trumpets. Then you will remember the Lord, your God, and re- and rescued from your enemies. Then you will, um, you will be remembered, um, you will be remembered by the Lord your God and rescued from your enemies. Also at your times of rejoicing, your appointed festivals and new moon, new mu- new moon feast. You are to sound the trumpets over your burnt offerings and fellowship offerings. And there will be a memorial for you, for you before your God, I'm the Lord, your God. So we see the significance of trumpet blasts. Trumpet blasts could be a battle, call, could be an announcement, could be a warning. And we see here, it could be, uh, a sign of, uh, celebration. On the twentieth day of the second month of the second year, the cloud lifted from above the tabernacle of the covenant law. Then Israelite set out from the desert of Sinai and traveled from place to place until the cloud came to rest in the desert of Paran. They set out this first time at the Lord's command through Moses. The divisions of the camp of Judah went first under the standard. Uh, Eschan, son of Ammonadab, was in command. Nathanael, son of Zor, was over the division of the tribe of Ishakar. And Eliab, son of Helen, was over the division of the tribe of Zebulun. Then the tabernacle was taken down and the Gershites, Mer- Merriites, who carried it, set out. So we see all the divisions of, um, the twelve tribes of Israel are, um, setting out. So again, the trumpet blasts. And we know the distinction between, uh, a trumpet blast and the trumpet that sends, um, that's actually sending out. So we, we know the distinction again. Um, as I'm gonna go back here to remind me and all of us. That, um. There's a, um, when we, the gathering of the community, you're gonna see that the trumpets are blown. And then, um, we're gonna see the distinction, sounded the, um, when the trumpet blasts is sounded, the tribe. The tribes camping on the east are to set out. So you will see trumpets are used to gather the community. Again, trumpets are used to, as a, a form of celebration, et cetera. Now, this is verse twenty-nine. Now Moses said to Abba, son of Ruel, the Midianite, Moses' father-in-law. We are setting out for the place about which the Lord said, I'll give it to you. Come with us and we will treat you well, for the Lord has promised good things to Israel. He answered, no, I will not go. I'm going back to my own land and my own people. But Moses said, please do not leave us. You know where we should camp in the wilderness and you can be our eyes. If you come with us, we will share with you whatever good thing the Lord gives us. So they set out from the mountain of the Lord and traveled for three days. The ark of the covenant of the Lord went before them during these three days to find them a place to rest. The cloud of the Lord was over them by day when they set out from the camp. See, now we see that Trump is setting them out. Blow the trumpets, they're setting out to find a place to rest. Whenever, okay. Whenever the ark set out, Moses said, rise up, Lord, may your enemies be scattered. May your foes flee before you. Whenever it came to rest, he said, return, Lord, to the countless thousands of Israel. We see this echoed in Psalm, chapter sixty-eight, verse one through two. And, uh, as I get there, I'll read it to you. Cause I know this was part of my journey. I read Numbers and, uh. Again, I, I didn't wanna read the Bible again. One day I was so tired. But I know the Holy Spirit said, go get that Bible. And I just randomly picked. Psalm sixty-eight, I don't know how. What's the Holy Spirit and it is written, may God arise, may his enemies be scattered. May his foes flee before him. May you blow them away like smoke as wax melts before the fire. May the wicked perish before God. So then we see, we want God to be the enemy of our enemies. And, um. Wasn't gonna, but I love this one, this Psalm, everybody loves the Psalms, it's, it's beautiful and purges you. Yeah. I believe it's Psalm thirty-five. Verse one going down. Contend, Lord, with those who contend with me. Fight against those who fight against me. Take up shields and armor, arise and come to my aid. Brand despair and javelin against those who pursue me. Say to me, I am your salvation. May those who seek my life be disgraced and put to shame. May those who plot my ruin be turned back in dismay. May they be like chaff before the wind with the angels of the Lord driving away. May their path be dark and slippery with the angels of the Lord pursuing them. So, um, these Psalms, uh, are, 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 are revelations, they're food for us. You know, when we are persecuted at work, we're persecuted at our households, we're persecuted on the streets. We have a sense of urgency to call out to God, who is our shield and our reward. And he will fight valiantly for us. So we just need to be still and, um. As we go to Numbers eleven. We're going to see again. The Lord talking about his arm. And I know as humans, you know, God can rescue us from this, that, those and these. But then when another wave comes. Unpleasant circumstance comes, we say, oh, I know God helped me then, but I don't know about now. Well, we should have this confidence. It doesn't matter how many times. God's gonna take us through, no matter what. It may seem. Larger, bigger, out of our hands. But we know from what God did for us then, he will still do for us now. And as i- is written in Second Corinthians, chapter one, God allows us to go through these events. So that we are not relying on our own strength, but we rely on the power of God that raised Jesus from the dead. I'll read that to you, so it doesn't seem that I'm just airing out words. Um, and then we're gonna go to Numbers, chapter eleven. Let's go to Second Corinthians, chapter one. Let's go to Second Corinthians, chapter one, verse eight, and just to encourage you, whenever you see that you go. And there's another, no, 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 don't have that attitude. You should be thankful because God is teaching you how to persevere. And he's strengthening. He's making you a stronger tree. And that's a picture of us. Will not be blown down. We do not want you to be uninformed, brothers and sisters, about the troubles we face in the province of Asia. We were under great pressure far beyond our ability to endure so that we despaired of life itself. Indeed, we felt we had received the sentence of death. But this happened that we might not rely on ourselves, but on God who raises the dead. He delivered us from such a deadly peril and he will deliver us again. On him, we have set our hope that we will continue, that he will continue to deliver us. So we have to have this confidence, yes, God delivered us from this, that and those. God helped us cross the Red Sea. God helped us, um, by giving us manna, he gave us water. I know God's gonna help us. But look, they're giants. I, it doesn't matter, God's gonna help us. I believe in him. I don't believe in myself. I believe in God. But we only have three hundred men. Uh, we will conquer the Midianites because of God's word. See, God wants us to be dependent children. That's why it's still. Into the most powerful in the kingdom. But the devil's movement is you can be your own God. You don't need God to help you. You could be self-sufficient, you can rely on your own understanding, your logic and logic and reasoning. You don't have to confer with God and seek, seek his counsel. But God does not want us to be puffed up. He does not want us to be proud on account of our beauty or. He does not want us to be proud on account of our beauty or on account of our intelligence. Or on the count of whatever talents we have. He wants us to be dependent little children. And he will fight our battles. Let's go to No- Numbers, chapter eleven. Now the people complained about their hardships. In the hearing of the Lord. And when he heard them, his angel was arou- his anger, his anger was aroused. Then fire from the Lord burned among them and consumed some of the outskirts of the camp. When the people cried out to Moses, he prayed to the Lord and the fire died down. So that place was called Taborah. Tober, um, um, Taborah, because fire from the Lord had burnt among them. We just read some verses about God's delivering hand. I know it may be bumpy. We may get seasick. We may be throwing up. But please do not murmur and complain. Trust God's deliverance. And listen. Don't think we're gonna come out of this war without any wounds. Jesus himself could tell you that. He got wounded. Got pierced in the side. Now. We're driven in his hands and his feet. He's got wounds. So don't think that you're gonna be skipping around in this earth unscathed, so to speak. You're gonna get some wounds. You're going to get hit by people who are going to mistreat you, even when you were expressing loving kindness to them. You're going to be wounded. But don't murmur and complain about your hardships. All these trials are designed. For you to be conformed to the image of Christ. You see that exemplified in Joseph's life. He was put in the system. He was sold into slavery, but what happened in the end? The same who betrayed him bowed down at his feet. So whatever plans God has for you, the enemy cannot thwart God's plans for you. That's why we continue to eat these words. I know the plans you, plans to prosper, not to harm you, plans to give you a hope in the future. That you're called upon me and go and pray to me and I'll listen to you. Seek me and find me when you seek me with all your heart, says the Lord. I'll be found by you and I'll set you, I'll bring you back from captivity. So these words should be echoed in our hearts. We know that it's not gonna be, uh, an easy journey, but we're gonna have a safe landing, no matter what. So don't complain. And if you see that you're on the verge of complaining about so-and-so not doing this and you're overworked. Say, God forgive me, I'm just, I'm venting, but please, I, I, I trust you. I'm just, this is uncomfortable, this hurts, and just be transparent with me. And, uh, it's, we are making s- uh, thanks, s- s- sacrificing thanks offerings. So, you know, when we read Zephaniah, uh, I think it's Noah Habakkuk, I'll read that to you. As a matter of fact, I'm gonna go there now. He's talking about though this is happening and though that is happening, we still rejoice. We still rejoice, because we know the enemy's banking on us saying, ah, this is cursed God, he's not giving us what we want. Ah, forget him. That's what the devil wants us to do. But as long, no matter what the enemy is gonna throw at us, put us in prison. Maybe harm us or flog us or put us in storms, we keep worshiping God. Then you see that, um, with Paul and Silas, they worshiped God even though they were in chains. And, and that, that's what, now we see that we're going to be suffering for God's name. And God is looking for worshippers in spirit and in truth. So let's go to, um. Just to encourage one another. I know it's, as they say, it's easy said than done, but that's why we need to refer to the word of God. We need to always refer to the Lord, um, word of God. Okay. Habakkuk, chapter three, verse seventeen. I'm gonna read all the way to the end of the, um, the chapter. Though the thick tree does not butt, and there are no grapes in the vines. Though the olive crops falls. And the fields produce no food, though they are no, there are no sheep in the pen. And no cattle in the stalls, yet I will rejoice in the Lord. I will be joyful in God, my Savior. The sovereign Lord is my strength, and he makes my feet like the feet of a deer. He enables me to tread on the heights for the directive. And, and so we see that no matter what the circumstance is, circumstances is temporal. You know, when we're in a pursuit of happiness, but you know, pursuing happiness is temporary. And if we rely on pleasant circumstances, right? It's, it's, it's not stable. It's not a rock. It's not a strong foundation. Because once that happy moment goes, all of a sudden we're in a bad mood. We need to rejoice in a Lord from the inside. Jesus even declared to his disciples that, yeah, you're gonna have trouble in this world, but. Take heart, I've overcome the worlds. So we are going to face dreadful circumstances. Don't listen to those pictures who say that God's gonna defeat lack once you believe in the cross and all that. That's garbage. The scripture says, I know what it is to be in wants and I know what it is to be in plenty. I can do all things through Christ who strengthens me. That's Philippians, chapter four, verse six through seven. That's what we need to keep eating. Don't listen to that. Cause you know, the world's always going to offer us convenience to lure us back to Egypt. Of course, paying your bills on time and having no problems. That's convenience, but you know what? You're still not gonna have peace within. And that's why we read Ecclesiastes. It's the chasing of the wind. No matter how many accomplishments, um, King Simon made. Got entertainers, he got stables, he got horses all over. Wasn't satisfied. It was the chasing of the wind. You see, folks. This life is empty without God. You need to have God as your treasure. These treasures, people will rob them. These treasures here will, uh, we, um, will go, will succumb to decay. But we serve a treasure that will never betray you, never leave you nor forsake you. Will be closer to you than a brother telling you. Treasure every moment you have with God here, regardless of the circumstances you encounter. And this is the training. We are being trained as soldiers to worship God no matter what. So of course the enemy is going to try and discourage us, because he doesn't want anybody to worship God. Alright, so as we further go down. Numbers. Chapter eleven. Now, they're complaining, they're murmuring. And God was very angry, and Moses interceded for them. And now again, the rabble within began to. Crave other food and began, and again, the Israel started wailing and said, if only we had meat to eat. We remember the fish we ate in Egypt at no cost. Also the cucumbers and melons and leeks, onions and garlic. But now we have lost our appetite. We'll never see anything but this manna. Again, Jesus prefers himself as the treasure. Do not lay up your treasures here on earth. Wherever your treasure is, there your heart will be also, but Jesus is the manna. He is all we need. And yes, I'm being detoxed. I'm going through this withdrawal, so to speak. You know, like heroin addicts, they gotta be locked up in a room and sweat out all the, uh, the cravings from their system. To be sober again. Well, you know what? It applies to each and every believer or not, right now in this day and age, in this walk. Through the desert, we need to be emptied of all the, the dictions we have. All the fetions that we have for things that will betray us, things that are lies, illusions. People may say, hey, if I can have sex with anybody. Hey, that's a pleasure I want to indulge. It makes me happy, but you'll never be satisfied. You'll keep thirsting. But only Jesus is a living water that can satisfy you and free from this. He's the manna that you need. That's all you need. These cravings are distractions from your true love, your true lover. They're all fakers out there. And they're always gonna bring you harm and disappointment and regret. So, again, if you see that you're being disciplined, left and right, well, how come everybody else is getting away with it? And when it comes to me, I get caught. You better be kissing God's feet. It means that you're not illegitimate. God disciplines those he loves. If you're not disciplined, you are illegitimate. Believe that. The manna was like a coriander seed and looked like resin. The people went around gathering it and then ground it in a handmill or crushed it in a mortar. They cooked it in a pot or made it into loaves, and it tasted like something made with olive oil. When the dew settled on the tampa at night, the manna also came down. Moses heard the people of every family wailing at the entrance of their, to their tents. The Lord became exceedingly angry and Moses was troubled. Yes, Lord, why have you brought this trouble on your servant? What have I done to displease you that you put the burden of all these people on me? Did I conceive all these people? Did I give them birth? Why do you tell me to carry them in my arms as a nurse carries an infant to the land you promised on oath to their ancestors? Where can I get beat for all these people? They keep wailing to me. Give us meat to eat. I cannot carry all these people by myself. The burden is too heavy for me. If this is how you're gonna treat me, please, go ahead and kill me. If I have found favor in your eyes and do not let me face my own ruin. The Lord said to Moses, bring me seventy of Israel's elders who are known to you. As leaders and officials among the people, have them come to the tent of meeting, that they may stand there with you. I will come down and speak with you there, and I will make, I'll take some of the power of the spirit this, that is on you. And put it on them. They will share the burdens of the people with you, so that you will not have to carry it alone. Tell the people, consecrate yourselves in preparation for tomorrow, when you will eat meat. The Lord heard you when you wailed. If only we had meat to eat. We were better off in Egypt. Now the Lord will give you meat, and you will eat it. You will not eat it for just one day or two days or five, ten or twenty days, but for a whole month. Until it comes out of your nostrils and you lull it. Because you have rejected the Lord who is among you and have wailed before him, saying. Why do we ever leave Egypt? You see that, uh, in James and First John. There's scriptures that says, if anyone who loves the world or things of the world is not in good relation with God. You're in, and you are in enmity with God. Do not love this world and the things of it. Please do not. Cause as we see, this world is fleeting, day by day. And the desires and lusts of the eyes, lusts of the flesh will disappear. But Moses said, here I am among six hundred thousand men on foot, and you say, I'll give them meat to eat for a whole month. Would they have enough if flocks and herds were slaughtered for them? Would they have enough if all the flesh in the sea were caught for them? He's just basically saying, these people will never be satisfied, no matter how many times you cater to their cravings. The Lord answered Moses, is the Lord's arm too short? Now you will see whether or not what I say will come true for you. So Moses went out and told the people what the Lord had said. He brought together seventy of their elders and had them stand around the tent. Then the Lord came down in the cloud and spoke with them, and he took some of the power of the spirit that was on him. And put it on the seventy elders. When the spirit rested on them, they prophesied, but did not do so again. We are going to read a few. Verses on the spirit resting on people and prophesying the spirit. These are just evidence of the Holy Spirit resting on you. So, um, let's take a, a journey to, um. Before I go there, I want you all to read, when you see wind or when you see. The spirit resting on, it's, it's the Holy Spirit. You are going to see that the Holy Spirit has many gifts. Certain individuals are the gift of teaching, certain individuals are the te- um, the gift of serving others, et cetera. Some may speak in languages of men inspired by the Holy Spirit. So, um. Again, however, two men whose names were Eldad and Medad had remained in the camp. They were listed among the elders but did not go out to the tent. Yet the spirit also rested on them, and they prophesied in the camp. A young man ran and told Moses, Eldad and Bedad are prophesying in the camp. Joshua, son of Nun, who had been Moses's aide since youth, spoke up and said, Moses, my lord, stop them. But Moses replied, are you jealous for my sake? I wish that all lords, all the lords people were prophets, and that the Lord would put his spirit on them. Then the Moses and the elders of Israel returned to the camp. Now, a wind went out from the Lord and drove quail in from the sea. When you see wind, okay, that was actual wind. The wind is the spirit. Of God. Let's go to, um. Let's go to, um, let's read John, chapter three, verse eight. Jesus referred to himself as the wind. And the wind blows, blows wherever he pleases. He opens our hearts wherever he opens our hearts. The Holy Spirit will transform others whom he, whom the Lord wants to transform. We see that, um, we see that in, um, Lydia's encounter, the jailer's encounter. Cornelius's encounter, we see that the Holy Spirit comes in like the wind. So when you read your Bibles, you know. I share it with you. So you can have a, a clearer understanding. Okay, so when we read here, John, chapter three, verse eight. Jesus says to Nicca- uh, Nicodemus, the wind blows wherever it pleases. You hear its sound, but you cannot tell where it comes from or where it goes, where it's going. So it is with everyone born of the Spirit. Now, I'm going to put an I in place of wind. I blow wherever I please. You hear my sound, but you cannot tell where I come from or where I'm going. So it is with everyone born of the Spirit. Nobody knew where Jesus came from. Nobody knew where J- Jesus's destination was going to be. They, they, they rejected him. Oh, this is our son, Mary, and Joseph's son. We know who he is. We seen him grow up. Oh, this is Mary and Joseph's son. We know who he is. We seen him grow up. And now he says he's a bread that came down from heaven. This again is a dress rehearsal. Again, the manor is Jesus. So every time you reject the manor. Because you have a craving for sex, or you have a craving for making money, or you have a craving for whatever, whatever pleasure out there. That is contrary to God. That's what we're fighting every day. And that's what means we're fighting the flesh. Our old nature that we're cursed with is typified of Satan's personality. We think that being independent and being concerned about our own will. Overrides serving God's will. So we're gonna read other scriptures with, with that, um, talk about this wind. And then we're gonna talk about the prophesying and the dreams too. Let's go to Joel, chapter two, verse twenty eight through twenty nine. Joel, chapter two, verse twenty eight through twenty nine. Give me one second as I get there. I will pour out my spirit on all people. Your sons and daughters will prophesy. Your old men will dream dreams, your young men will see visions. Even on my servants, both men and women, I will pour out my spirit in those days. Let's go to Acts, chapter two, verse one through four. So you see the Old Testament and New Testament, they walk hand in hand. And I wanna get it right this time. The Old Testament is the New Testament concealed, and the New Testament is the Old Testament revealed. So let's go to Acts, chapter two, verse twenty eight. Twenty nine. And there we read. Uh, just give me one second as I get there. All right. We're gonna see the wind. I'm sorry, I got the verses wrong, but I'll get there. It's in Acts, chapter two. Okay. It's written. When the day of Pentecost came, they were all together in one place. Suddenly, a sound like the blowing of a violent wind came from heaven and filled the whole house where they were sitting. They saw what seemed to be tongues of fire that separated and came to the rest on each of them. So you see how it says that the spirit rested on these men who were prophesying in the book of Numbers? Same thing you see here. You see that the spirit is typified as a wind, or the spirit is resting on these men. For they, for them to prophesy or speak in different languages. And of, of them were filled with the Holy Spirit and began to speak in other tongues as the Spirit enabled them. Okay, now um, I wanna go back to not worrying and complaining. Um. Once we realize that this world is not our reward. And that we are looking for Christ, our reward. We don't care what the circumstances are. As long as we have the joy of the Holy Spirit within us, we are going to be strengthened. We're gonna be confident, and we're gonna realize each and every day. We embark, we get closer to receiving. God is our reward. So um, I want to encourage you by reading John, chapter six, verse twenty six, verses twenty six through twenty seven. And then we'll go to Luke, chapter twelve. Please don't worry. I know you can cast all your anxieties on God. I'm not saying there's not gonna be any worries, but cast all your worries on God. Let him take care of your burdens. And trust God. It is written. Very truly I tell you. You are looking for me not because you saw the signs I performed, but because you ate the loaves and had your fill. Do not work for food that spoils, but for food that endures to eternal life, which is the Son of Man will give you. For on him, God the Father, has placed his seal of approval. We need to eat Jesus. We need to eat all these words that we are reading about right now to this present moment. This is our manor. We'll eat a loaf of bread from the supermarket. It'll last only for maybe a day or two. But these words will be forever, and this word will never spoil. Let's go to Luke, chapter twenty two through thirty four. Just encourage you and encourage myself. Luke, chapter twelve, verse twenty two through thirty four. And there we read. Therefore I tell you, do not worry about your life. What you will eat or about your body, what you will wear. For life is more than food and the body more than clothes. Consider the ravens. They do not sow or reap. They have no storeroom or barn, yet God feeds them. And how much more valuable you are than birds. Who of you worrying can add a single hour to your life? Since you cannot do this very little thing, why do you worry about the rest? Consider how the wildflowers grow. They do not labor or spin. Yet I will tell you, not even Solomon, all his splendor was dressed like one of these. If that is how God clothes the grass of the field, which is here today and tomorrow, stoned into the fire, how much more will he clothe you? You of little faith. And do not set your heart on what you will eat or drink. Do not worry about it. For the pagan world runs after all such things, and your father knows what you, that you need them. But seek his kingdom, and these things will be given to you as well. You see, in a relationship, if I'm in a relationship with someone who just says, just take me here, take me there. And have no interest in talking with me or having any deep conversations or having any intimacy, you know. This take and take and take and take. What kind of relationship is that? But when we have a relationship with our king, well, yes, we have concerns, we have our needs, we have our basic necessities here on earth. But he, we're gonna be like Mary. We're just gonna be in his presence. And once we have that as our top priority in our lives. Despite all the circumstancia, um, the circumstances and all the demands of this so-called life. You seek him and seek to be in his presence or have a strong awareness of his presence in our hearts. Then he will bless us. And we don't have to be stressed out about what we have in the bank, or we have here, and we have this, so he will provide all that. And I always encourage myself, did Jesus have money for burial? Was he overconcerned? Oh, you know, God, okay, if I, if I, if I, okay, pass this cup, okay, not your will, but my will, but make sure that I have a plot, please. Seek to do God's will. It'll all be taken care for you. Focus on him. And all these will come in place for you. You're no longer living for yourselves. Your life as worship, you are making your life a living sacrifice for others. This is not, you're not just living for yourself, but you're living for. You're living to be a blessing to others. Love is not self-seeking. Love does not dishonor. So we have to understand, again. These scriptures that we're reading. Great. You know it intellectually, but if this knowledge that we share with you is not helping you produce love, then it's a waste of time. Cause the devil again knows the Bible back inside out, can one lapse around us intellectually? But the only difference is this spirit. We need to take in this, this knowledge and understand. If we're focused on loving God and others, our wisdom becomes pure. Our knowledge becomes pure. Our understanding becomes pure, like little children. We're seeking to help others to express love. But again, I don't care if you know all the twelve trials, and I know this, and I know this war and when it took place, and I knew where Jesus was buried. But if you have no love, you're wasting your time. And remember, love is not, there's feelings that come from love, but love is the decision. In spite of what this person did to me, I'm still going to fight the good fight of faith and expressing love, because faith is best expressed through love. Now it's puffs up, but love builds up. That's what we are aiming to do. We're here to build one another up. So now we see that this wind that inspired people to speak in different languages. We see that this wind rests on people so they can prophesy. We see that this wind is the Holy Spirit, the Spirit of Christ. So now a wind went out from the Lord and drove quail in from the sea. It scattered them up to the two cubits deep all around the camp, as far as the day is walking in any direction. All that day and night, and all the next day, the peoples went out and gathered whale. No one gathered less than ten omers. Spread them out all around the camp. But while the meat was still between their teeth and before it could be consumed, the angel of the Lord burned against the people. And he struck them with a severe plague. Therefore the place was named Tippurath Hadavah, because they were buried. There they buried the people who had craved other food. From Tippurath Hadavah, the people traveled to Hazarath and stayed there. I'm gonna share these scriptures with you. I'm gonna read them straight through. If you're wondering where these verses came from, don't worry, I'll text them to you, or again, you'll have the luxury of hearing this Bible study session. On YouTube channel. I'll share the link with Scott, and he'll share the link with you. And I'm gonna read this to you to encourage you whenever you're facing unpleasant circumstances and challenges. Is the Lord's arm too short? I'm the Lord, the God of all mankind. Is there anything too hard for me? Surely the arm of the Lord is not too short to save, nor his ear too dull to hear. Now you will see whether or not what I say will come true for you. Always be confident in God's word, and we know that God's word is his son. Have confidence in the word. It's sharper than any double-edged sword. This word perceives your thoughts, knows the thoughts before you think your thoughts. Let's have confidence in our King, our Creator, our God, our Savior, Jesus Christ. And we're all gonna understand that whatever the Father does is always done through the Son. God, the Father creates, is done through the Son. God wants to redeem a people is done through the Son. God wants to heal people is done through the Son by the power of the Holy Spirit. And that's how our Elohim works. And that's why it is written. Without him, nothing was made that has been made. In him was life, and that life was the light of men. The light shines in the darkness, and the darkness could not overcome him. Every time they try to trip him up or try to trap him in his own words, or, hey, should we pay taxes to Caesar or not? The word in defense sharper than any other sword. Give to Caesar what belongs to Caesar's and give to the Lord what belongs to the Lord's. This is the light that cannot be overcome by darkness. This is the light that God introduced to us even from the beginning. Let there be light. And God separated the light from the darkness. He separated the righteous from the wicked. The righteous who are in Christ. I will encourage you to continue to read the Bible on your own time. This is not a hobby. This is not, oh, I'm gonna take some legion, just skip around. This is a fight for your life. And having confidence that God is going to redeem you from the foundation of the world, from a terrible oppressor. Who not, does not want anything. He does not want the best for you. He wants you to plunge in destruction and shame with him. He wants. To cling on to God through his word. Not only you start up memorizing, but then when you are face to face with challenges, you're face to face with uncertainties. Then the word starts to come out of you like living water. This is what Jesus was talking. Anyone who comes from who's thirsty, streams of water will come out to him. As the scripture says, so you will speak nothing but wisdom, because why? The hope of glory is inside of you. You need to speak these words. Acknowledge these words, and God will make your path straight. I love you guys, and whatever we share with you or plan to share with you. We do this out of the kindness of our hearts. And this is going to encourage you. You see, when Jesus talks about the power of the sower and how this one seed became ten, a hundred, a thousand, that means. If you are gonna let the deceitfulness of wealth choke your faith or because of persecution. But the seed that's planted in good soil. You're going to be a witness to not only one person, five people, you're gonna be a witness to everybody. You want everybody to know. You wanna be a witness. You wanna be a lamb stand on the hill. And people may call you Jesus freaks or be embarrassed by you, but you have this confidence because of the revelations that you receive and all these encounters, like, oh, I know Jesus. And if he can change me, he can change you. And that's who God is looking for. We need to be bold witnesses. Need to be lamb stands. We need to have the trumpet to warn the people. That's Brother Scott's favorite scripture, Ezekiel, chapter thirty three, verse three. Yes, we warn the people. Hmm, the blood's not on my head, it's on their head if they refuse to listen. But I'm gonna go out there and I'm gonna be a witness. I'm not gonna be overconcerned about who's chosen, who's not. I'm just gonna do this out of the kindness of my heart and for my love for God who came to me. And you will realize, please do not be prideful and say, I was looking for Jesus and I was doing this and I finally figured it out. No, he called you. He chose you and appointed you to bear fruit. So if you see that echoed in your life, kiss God's feet. He's given you a sign way before you were born. So be thankful. Read the scriptures. It never said that Abraham was calling God. He was in a family of idol worshippers. God called him. Matthew, the tax collector, wasn't calling Jesus. Jesus says, come, follow me. It's not based on what we've done, it's based on him who calls us out of darkness. Brother Scott, you have any closing words or anything? Anyway, again, if anyone has any questions, any concerns, please feel free to come to the table.
Please. Yes, thank you, Brother Lyndon. Um. Beloved brethren, as Lyndon just said, or any questions, comments, or concerns that anyone like to bring to the table. Um, and again, if it doesn't pertain to tonight's study, that's okay. Um, we don't want you to lose your thought. We don't want you to lose, um, what questions it may have. If you feel a little, um. What they say, camera shy. You don't want to, um, you know, um. Don't want this to be a public question, comment, or concern. Um, you have my, y'all have my number here. Just shoot me a text. And um. If I feel there's something that I can't, um, come up with the answer without hit my baby brother. And we'll definitely make sure to answer your comments or give all your concerns. And again, um. I just wanna elaborate on a thought that Brother Lyndon had earlier. And that is. Do we have a relationship with God? You know, we, we, the world spends so much time focusing on having a religion. My religion, my religion, religion, religion. Do we have a relationship? Do we have a relationship? With the Father, the Son, the Holy Spirit? With the Father, the Son, the Holy Spirit? You know, it's not just a thing of, you know, like Lyndon say, you, you, you go. Hey dad, can I have a gold watch, can I have a gold Lamborghini, can I have a this, can I have a that? And there's no relationship with you all, are you working hand in hand? Um, Amos, the book of Amos asks a question, can two walk together unless they be agreed? You know, that's, 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 it can't be done. So do we have a relationship with the Father, the Son and the Holy Spirit? And trust me when I tell you. If you have a relationship with the Father, the Son and the Spirit. When you ask for things, you'll be in a better frame of mind, you'll, you'll be in a better spirit when you love this person. And knowing that they love you back. So again, beloved brethren, are there any questions, comments or concerns? And I just wanna put this out there as well, I was talking to one of my coworkers earlier today. And this is something that Brother Lyndon and I uh. Devoting, gonna devote the remainder of our lives to. And we're just praying and hoping that God will give us enough room and space to be able to get out the complete study of the whole Bible. Like I said, our aim, goal, intention and desires to cover all sixty-six books, not skipping one. Because we wanna get the whole counsel of God from the whole world of God. To make us whole men and women fit for his kingdom, remember. The book of Numbers is revealing to us, we have to be cleansed, we have to be shaved. We have to be. Or have these things done to us so that we may be of service to God. And beloved, trust me, I wanna serve my Father. Because as, as Bob Dylan's song goes, you gotta serve somebody.